I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Teresa. Please take your role.
Okay, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Keel.
Yep.
Bowen.
Yep.
Barron.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Jazz.
Yes.
All right, do we have any additions or motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
All right, how about the minutes from the 9:17 meeting? Any motions or actions from the council?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Two seconds, that's a fourth, that's good. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jay?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
My head was there. Sean?
Yes.
See?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go say the first names every- I won't remember that.
Just really threw everything off there.
Yeah, I know I did. Uh, I haven't been able to, so... Any bills?
No bills.
No bills? All right, anybody from the public?
I have a public- I have one public comment today. I, uh, I talked to-
To a poll.
Oh, I know, I can actually though. I want to be official. Um, I talked to a resident of a party and very good feedback from the citizens up there with the four-way stop sign and the crosswalk, so I thought I would share that.
As I always said, you must make yourself too available. There's nobody said anything to me.
Really? I was down at the farmer's market hanging around this guy, you know, so-
Oh, there's your first mistake.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wow.
And I'd like to thank council and city and everything while I was gone. Appreciate that. Travis took over and still bought dinner for me tonight, so that's even- that's a double win.
I was whamming.
Whammy.
Don't necessarily say that on the record or-
Oh, oh, sorry. He didn't buy dinner for anything else.
One cent, a hundred bucks.
It was. It was, way.
I was saying-
Yeah, way.
I had a coupon.
Yeah. All right, let's move down to applications agreements, hearings, resolutions, ordinances, review, approve the H A D F pond agreement. Take your packet. I know this is something they've been working on for a while. Amy, you want to add?
No, we're ready to hopefully have it signed and then get the board to sign off on it tomorrow and get it, I guess, submit it to the register of deeds and be able to sell some more land.
That's what we want to hear.
So it's been reviewed by the city attorney and if you have any questions, Austin's here to kind of frame it. It's pretty straightforward though, but there will be ponds, you know, on the H A D F development land and since the city owns land with the water tower and then the future bike path, basically all the property owners are gonna, basically, you know, like an HOA, like we talked about, put in funds to help maintain those ponds. And how much you put in is basically based on how much script footage you have up there and there's a chart in the agreement that shows, you know, what it would cost us. It's kind of the gist of it. We- the city does not own the ponds or maintain them, so like I said, it's gonna be this separate group that's gonna be maintaining them. But we're just a landowner and that we would contribute to our portion.
All right. Any action from the council?
I make a motion to approve the H A D F pond agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to reports. First up, Deputy Sheriff Cardis.
For whatever reason. Uh, for the month of September, we had to turn on calls for service. A pretty, pretty good month, I would say. A couple of things that people want to know and talk about is, um, we saw enough taking vandalism over at the city parks for whatever reason, uh, so if the public is listening. Uh, if you see something, record it, especially if it's during daytime hours or nighttime hours, uh, we just don't know what's kind of going on. We can't be everywhere kind of a thing, so if you see kids going in and out of bathrooms laughing and giggling, you see a book coming out of the bathroom, probably you can follow that in, probably. Uh, frauds, we've been seeing uptick in fraud reports, uh, so if you- People really get tied in to these very persuasive people and they give really intimate information to these scammers and people are out thousands of dollars. It's kind of a thing that we're just kind of seeing, um, so just be really mindful of phone calls that you're answering from telephone marketers or claiming to be a job, if they're claiming to be someone who needs money to bail them out of jail or some like that, so just don't fall for it. Uh, we're seeing a lot of those types of scams. Um, and then we had twenty case reports done in that timeframe and, um, four of us. Um, our new school resource officer, Deputy Gomez, is in full action at the West Central now. He's been pretty busy. He's on maternity leave for the first three weeks of school, so I filled in and boy, is it busy there. With a lot of just kids, um, vaping and bullying type of calls is what we're seeing at the school, so it's hard, it's sad, um, but yeah, that's kind of what we're seeing right now.
What's your thoughts on these scooters?
Whatever y'all want.
I mean-
Who knows where it's at?
Yeah. Girl, I mean, I don't think it's something that we want to delve into, but it- it's a problem. I'm- I'm just- I'm those old electric ones, they just shoot off the streets on-
We're not talking about e-bikes.
Nope, I'm talking about little stand-on scooters.
Yeah. It's tough because they are motorized even though they're electric.
Right.
They are motor. Technically, they're not supposed to be on sidewalks or even, uh, our pathways as well too, per ordinance.
Right.
They can't be on there, but they are scooters, so it's really tricky of how- if you want to-
Right.
If you want to regulate that, they were really kind of-
Well, I don't think we do, but I got asked about it, that's why I wanted to-
Yeah. I- I- I would just say for parents, just to read the manual. If a helmet's required, put that in, out, and out, because it could save a kid's life, so.
Yeah. There's a pile, boy, there is a pile of them running around.
It's something with the city newsletter about putting metal on sidewalks.
Yeah, and then you have kids- I mean, I- I get that you have kids driving on streets and it's a dumb much sort almost. So it's kind of like, do you like kids to be kids? Right. And then it falls on the parents for teaching their kids the rules of the road, that kind of thing, so it's- I would say it's tricky to find a line.
Yeah, it is. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I haven't- I've seen- got complaints of kids blowing through stop signs. I've talked- stopped down and talked to kids, I'm like, "Kid, you gotta stop. You can't just blow through an intersection, especially like on railroad or Van de Mark or Van Mark and Second or Second and Third or Van Mark and Thirty-Eight, very dangerous area just because of the high traffic area." So I try to see- when I see kids being done, try to stop out with them and educate, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So handing out some tickets. How does that work with the ten- can you give a ten-year-old a stop sign ticket? No. I don't want to.
Yeah, I know. Bring this to your mom and dad.
Yeah.
Son, I didn't know we had a warrant out for your arrest. You got it unpaid.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think we can count on parents to do a lot of that, at least, and especially with the young, you know, spot checking here and there and reminding our kids.
Yeah.
I know a little warning occasionally from a police officer can be helpful.
Yeah.
Coming up, so. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Things are good in the hood, so-
You bet.
Um, you put it in your hood.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you. Economic Development, Development Directors, your part, Amy Farr.
Um, most of my information's in your packet. Um, I reached out to the South Dakota DNR again. I'm trying to reach out every week to- every two weeks to see if they've come to a resolution. Nothing's been resolved as of yet, so hoping to hear back again. Pond agreement, I'm happy to say, you guys went along with it, so that's great, so thank you for doing that. One last thing on the checklist. Um, and having a few meetings here and there. Um, one was with Calvin. He's with South Dakota Travel and he's able to give us funds for different events that come through, so like when, I think it's rally, brush at the rally, rally when the bikers come through. Um, the- the Department of Travel can give us up to five hundred dollars to help promote Hartford when they come through, so working on some ideas with him and, uh, when for next year, as well as some other opportunities that they could hopefully give us some funding for to help make things go through. Um, met with a former colleague of mine, Valerie Wilson with the South Dakota Soybean Association. She is looking to hopefully bring a group here between fifty and seventy-five people. Um, they'd be farmers, legislators, possibly Senator Thune, Rounds, and Congressman Dustin Johnson would be in attendance as well, so working with her to get something of that interest set up. Um, working with some people that are just recently hosting some land for sale here in Hartford, um, as well as some buildings that will be going up and continue to do progress on the North Industrial Street project up there with some posts on Facebook of things going on, so it's kind of in a nutshell.
Okay, can I make any questions, Ray?
Where are we hosting a group of seventy-five people?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Where are we hosting a group-
She was hoping to do the brewery, but we might have to move it to, um, the event center across the street here and just put up tables and chairs and stuff. American Legion dugout upstairs.
All right. Nothing else for Amy. We will move on. Chamber Director, when she comes next meeting, you forward. Information for this meeting is in the packet. All right, next up. Favorite time of the night, City Engineers report.
Good evening. Um, general updates since last meeting. Continue to monitor fires on the Twelfth and Oaks project as well as at the school, um, to add to what Amy's saying, they started to curb a gutter on the north side of Oaks Avenue today and are working from Western Avenue to the south, um, kind of at the rate they're going, thinking they'll be done end of this week or the next, so staying on top of them, making sure it won't get too cold on them before they pave, but-
The mayor's estimate or?
That's just based on the absurdity of the city.
Okay.
I think if you're in the next state and you're trying to curb it, they're not gonna fly.
Is there a curb machine or are they doing it by hand?
Curb machine.
But yeah, staying on top of that, making sure it's all going in through plans and specs into city standards. Additionally, the TAF grant for Tentacles Alternatives program, that has been submitted. We did get, uh, a receipt of submitted from the state, so that's good. I anticipated they'd be reviewing all those applications at their meeting in the middle of November, so we'll know more at that time. Um, working on and review plans for the Windsor group, got those back. The developer continue to help them push that forward. And then lastly, we are currently reviewing two plans, uh, various locations in town. Moving on to project updates, uh, the water rec facility, as I'm sure you've noticed, Mickelson Road is- is tore up. Uh, as of this evening, they're getting right about under Mickelson Road now. It's- it's pretty deep sewer. It's, uh, it's a little slow going just because it is about thirty feet deep. Um, however, at the rate they're going, you know, once they get past that, it should be pretty smooth sailing as the flood plain does shallow out there. Um, on the treatment site, still continue to work on the air mod structure, adding those guardrails, uh, walkways and, uh, catwalks. Um, risers and utility stuffs have been added in the operations building and the floor five is currently being installed. Uh, they're finishing up the roof as well. Um, and then lastly, site piping for the forest main, uh, lower water reuse and sledge lines are currently being installed as well. Once again, that Mickelson Road closure, you know, October eighteenth, I believe, is- is when they're planning to get it done. You know, all goes well. They did anticipate it to be done a little bit sooner, um, but that is- that is what we're gonna hold them to, just to make sure that, um, there are no unforeseen, uh, closure like the news. Uh, Hydro Thirty Water Main had the pre-construction meeting today. Uh, plan for them is to start on October twenty-first and that is a closure of Railroad Street. Uh, we do have it in there that Mickelson Road must be reopened prior to that closure, just to prevent any nature, um, traffic congestion, you know, across town. Um, and then those articles bores of Hydro Thirty-Eights, um, Colton Road and Second Street, um, and then really only take about three weeks for that construction. It is- it is water main, it is not under the paved road and then, you know, majority of it is in the ditch, so anticipate it to be pretty quick there. Um, the one thing to note is, you know, if there are any, call it hangups or they run into some exceptionally wet soil on the trunk sewer install, that may push that back by a week or two, uh, just because we want that sewer to be in prior to the water mains since it is deeper and there are a couple of crossings there, so. And then Western Avenue continue to, um, hold there for bidding later, so, so. Uh, any questions on your project updates?
Any questions from Michael? Or Justin?
I'm assuming you guys haven't received any feedback on the water closure on Mickelson. Everything good there, crack control from your husband's perspective, mental health, or?
Besides me forgetting about it twice, no. There's been a point.
I can remember when I leave, but now when I come home, apparently. Take a long way on the way home every day.
It is nice that the- that there's signs further up Mickelson to the west there. Um, that is a good reminder for the morning traffic at least.
Right.
Quick, there's no, uh, further questions. I have a few action items.
All right.
Uh, the first is for pay application number, uh, twelve, uh, for the water resource recovery facility, uh, in the amount of seven hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars. Um, details on that are in your packet.
All right, any action on that by the council?
Make a motion to approve pay request twelve to raise light construction.
Second. Any discussion? This is a smaller one. Oh, but when you add them all together, they're just about that. Creepin'. All right, hearing no discussion, we'll vote. Jazz?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
All right.
Next up is change order number six for the sixth of the month project. Uh, as a reminder, this is essentially city reimbursement for the work that the city had to perform to, um, get that punch list completed. Uh, it's in the amount of three thousand two hundred thirty dollars and fifty cents. You can notice that that is not the full amount of retainage outstanding. Uh, that is solely what, um, what the city incurred for costs on that, so.
Is that really all of our costs?
Yep, we- and we figured, um, for labor, we figured if we, you know, usually if we mow somebody's lawn or if we put in, you know, water, meat or whatnot, we charge two fifty, two hundred fifty dollars a man hour per person. We charge it to this too, not the actual salary rate or whatever, so we charged our max on that. And yeah, that's the full list Craig gave me of materials we used. Um, also the equipment we used, we charged what it would have cost to rent that equipment, so we threw that in there, so trying to capture, recapture, you know, our actual total cost of what it'd be of it. Um, like Michael said, that is just our cost. Um, we didn't figure anything extra for taking two years to close out the, you know, uh, project or whatnot, you know, that is totally up to you guys, you wanna, you know, we just wanted, Craig, the staff we talked about, we just wanted to reflect, you know, to that garage, this is what our costs were. And it's up to you guys whether if you want to charge anything additional on top of that.
Do our contracts need that there is a certain time to get it done?
Generally, substantial completion, the type of completion is thirty days after that, and then there is some clauses in there on getting the punch list completed after that, right? So in the grand scheme, things if the community really wanted to go after eliminating damages for announcing punch lists good, um, generally there's some challenges with that because you'd have to show the hardship associated with that. Some roundabout way, we can kind of say the hardship was the city going ahead and doing the work, which is reflected and be dumped on above what we had provided here, so.
I don't know if that's necessarily what we need to do for thirty-two hundred bucks, but it is disappointing that we hired them to do a job and they just did that, completed, you know, um, they weren't too busy to- to take the job from the beginning. The only other thing I thought of is, you know, what would be our charge? That, you know, yes, this is what it cost us for man hours and that, but what would be our charge for if we had our workers doing something else during that period of time? You know? That's the only thing I'm doing.
I guess. So I see this on the agenda, it says, oh wait, Herman, that's the next one. This is the change order, so I got a question on the next item, so.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, right? I think to your point, that labor rate at two fifty dollars, I guess that's almost triple probably what our cost is for an employee.
I would agree as well, yeah.
Uh, it's a lot more than that, and that's what- why we kind of charge that is because we don't want our guys doing that because there are other things that they couldn't be doing, so we want to make sure we're not charging their actual wage because we want to recoup some of that where they could be doing other things. Right.
Just out of curiosity, what do we- what do we do with that, what was left?
There was a couple of panels, sidewalk panels that got rolled on and cracked, so we had replaced the panels. Um, there was, uh-
Sort of signed or something? We had to-
Some of that stuff on the list was already done when Jess went there to take care of somebody. He said, he goes, "Some of this stuff's already been done," so.
Okay.
So the list wasn't as big as it was to begin on my phone.
We must have a tree stump grinder?
We had- we hired somebody to do it.
Can you give me his number?
I don't have it.
It's a really good deal. It's a really good deal, that's a grinder stump.
What'd they charge for grinding a stump?
Fifty bucks.
What?
Yeah, I think that's-
Are you joking?
It's been by- it's been by the inch, so I'm not- I- I just threw that number out. It's not a very big stump, it's very cap. I think we're gonna try to tear it out with the backhoe, so. Only throw it all in, so.
So we need to approve the, uh, change order or the- only the pay request for the thirteen hundred dollars?
You need to approve the change order if you're comfortable with that and then the pay request will be the next agenda item to- the balance then of that retainage would be the thirteen hundred dollars.
Pay request, okay.
That difference.
All right, any action on the, uh-
Before we do that, I mean, is there something we can do to tighten up punch list completion?
Right.
And the city billing the contractor, like sooner than three years later? That's crazy.
Yeah, I mean, it's, to be honest with everybody, the punch list and the last, I'm gonna call it, one, two percent of the project are always on us to get done, right? Especially with, uh, in all reality, um, once you have had six months, the contractor's gonna made up the mind whether they're gonna do it or not, the re-mobilization or whatever, to come in and do this is- it's already set in, right? That's a challenge on something like this. It's so small, the remote cost to come in and do the sidewalk just doesn't happen and goes on, so I think what we can do in the future is just be more proactive, once we get to that point where we understand that break point, jump onto that and just get these projects closed out and work on it.
And that's the thing, if they can't close out the projects, then they should be doing them though too. I mean, there's a- I get it's a small thing, but I think definitely being-
Build a house.
Right, I think definitely. Lesson learned, right? Because this thing has been on here since I joined the council.
Yeah.
I'm glad to see it hopefully get off, right?
Yeah.
I've got comments to make on the next agenda item, but I'll- I'll hold off on those.
Make a motion to approve change order number six.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
All right, the next up is the, uh, pay application for the remainder, which is one thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy cents.
Make a motion to approve pay request seven to that raise construction.
Second.
Why do we- okay, sorry, go ahead.
Any discussion? Go ahead, you got it.
So, just so I understand this, and maybe I- I don't, so there was a forty-six hundred some dollar-
Retainage.
Retainage.
Yeah.
We just approved forty, or we just approved, sorry, thirty-two hundred dollars.
We're gonna keep that.
We're gonna keep that, right?
Yeah.
So then. It's this thirteen ninety-one, what- we're not- so we're not paying, are we paying them?
That's because we've been holding that retainage fee.
I- I don't understand how the whole thing works, so if somebody could just explain that to me in a very simple way, because the way- I guess here's how I view it, so they- they didn't complete the work per- per the contract and now we're paying them for not completing the work. I mean, am I dumb or am I, I mean, am I not understanding how this works?
I- I can take it so-
Go ahead, Justin.
Then I know you'll ask me questions if you need more clarity, so, um, on a general project, we'll hold five percent retainage in its- for those instances very much if part of the contract is not complete, we hold that dollar amount to pretty much give the city some, some- some mechanism to get that item paid, right? If we know like five percent is really big on a project, we don't have that much, we can reduce some of that to still hold, you know, in this case, call it five grand for rough numbers. We do five grand to cover that cost. The city came in to complete those items based on the time and materials, equipment, et cetera, to get that, it only costs that thirty-two hundred dollars. So that's where that retainage saved us. If we did not pull that retainage, essentially we would be sending an invoice to the contractor and expecting them to pay us, right?
Yeah.
But this mechanism in avenue, we can just have a change order, you know, not expect the city to pay for that work, but there's still that remaining balance of that thirteen hundred dollars that is not required to complete that. So we're not necessarily paying them for the work that the city did, we're just paying them for that percentage of retainage that was held throughout the project that we haven't paid them yet for everything they got completed.
Okay, that makes sense.
They're getting paid for what, ninety-seven percent of the budget?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Including ninety-seven percent of the budget.
You would take.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any- can we hold on to this for like twelve or thirteen months?
Well, that's- that's my question though, is- is until we pay this, that warranty hasn't set in yet or hasn't started, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, final completion is when that warranty ends.
Substantial completion is when the warranty starts, yeah.
So it's already substantial completion is already taking place, so really we don't-
It feels like we're balking rice there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like Justin said, this retainage is for these punch list items.
Okay.
And then, yeah, we hope that.
But I do think if there's any way that we can tighten that up in the future, we need to tighten that up, like Sandy said, that's-
This is-
I mean, that's the- we gotta almost try to stop it on the front end because you really- we got past six months and really we were dead.
This is probably the longest we've had. I mean, most projects, I'd say within six months or so, they get them punch list items cleaned out because they want to close it out too and move on or not, but this one is drug out, the month, I can kind of remember.
All right, that they came around.
Yep.
All right, we had a motion in a second, anything else? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jazz?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Bowen?
No.
Mattson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Craig, Public Works Superintendent?
Reports there, just a couple of updates on some stuff in the parks. Pickleball, like I said, we did ribbon cutting on that. Um, we do have an eighty-eight parking pad that we're putting in yet, along with a eight-foot sidewalk that'll go from the parking pad up to the pickleball courts. And then there'll be an eight-foot sidewalk along the whole west side of the pickleball courts to get in and bowl hands. Um, that contractor is aware that, um, that's gonna do the work, um, just matter of get it done. It'll be done this fall, so.
We have so many of those getting donated benches because I had somebody ask me to-
So we had budgeted with this project, basically, we're gonna put two benches in the pickleball area.
Yeah.
Um, I had Deanna with the senior center come and they would like to sponsor one of the benches, so that cost will be reduced.
So there's one yet to be-
So there's one to be spoken for, if somebody wants to. Wants to take it.
Yeah, I'll send myself a reminder. Somebody at the ribbon-
Somebody at the ribbon cutting asked me about it.
Yeah, so there- there would be one free one.
The other one.
Awesome.
Yeah. What's the cost on that?
Seven.
I think it's six. Seven hundred.
Seven.
Yeah. They used to be six hundred, then they went six fifty, now they're seven. We're- we're just getting whatever the six cost is.
Okay, oh, sorry about that, Craig, that's what-
No, no problem.
Before I forgot about that, I wanted to ask.
Um, pool, like I said, we've got the- everything exposed, some that's been fixed already that, uh, that returns off the, um, uh, skimmers, whoever's been, that's been repaired. We just gotta get the other plumbing deals on vacation last week, so we kind of worked more on the sports complex, getting that stuff going out there. Um, you should be back on it this week, so hopefully by the end of the week we'll have that fixed, so we'll have this portion of fixed for now, then we'll get the concrete poured in this fall so that we can be ready for next season. Um, sports complex, uh, we did get- we've got all the rafters, uh, in place, set, tied in, except for the- Sports complex, we did get, we've got all the rafters in place, that tie-in, except for the very end one to the west, we ran out of tie-in today to get that one set, so. Hopefully, put that up tomorrow, and then hopefully we'll get the, start putting on the sheeting, and get steel put up, and keep moving ahead. Once we get the, once we get sealed up, then we'll get plumbers in there, electrical in there, get going with that, so hopefully by the nice weather yet this fall, we'll have it pretty much completely finished, so, inside.
Great.
And that's all I've got, now somebody's got something for me.
Just observations, such as streetlights in there, and do you have the, you seen the purple streetlight?
Yeah, my son loves that purple streetlight.
So, the LEDs are actually the phosphor that sprayed on them, the phosphor reduces, and then the light becomes purple. So, there's a spec, I'm sure that can be written, to prevent, you know, or put it to a standard, but yeah, there's really not much you can do about it.
I just get hold of Sioux Valley, we have light problems, it's the pole lumber.
Just take care of it, yeah. I get asked frequently, and it's really, I mean, I wanna make sure I'm regurgitating the right information. Folks that live in the multifamily, multi-unit along Highway thirty, they're fighting off cars between all, is that a six blocks?
Yeah.
So, there used to be a light at the end of the driveway to, into the golf course, if I remember correctly, just a streetlight. And when they redid that, they removed that streetlight, because they have parking lights. They've asked about putting a streetlight there, and I've told them, I believe, that is public, private property.
Yeah, that'd be right.
They have to talk to their landlord about getting a streetlight there.
Yeah. I mean, if the homeowner is one, if they can talk to Sioux Valley, somebody can pay the bill on it.
Right, right, okay, alright.
Yeah.
So, did Gray Light take that pole down? Was it limited, put it down?
I, those, I'm sure, Sioux Valley might have taken it down, because it wasn't, nobody's paying for it, I mean, he said, there was a lot of, or not a lot, there's quite a few different lights in town that were cleaned up over the years, some were on a street that a homeowner's paying for, because they wanted to lay out in front of their street or in front of their place. And then there's other ones that were on private property that we had removed that we were paying for, so everything's been getting cleaned up pretty good, so.
I was just more curious.
And then speaking about Sioux Valley, they will be burying, burying this, all the overhead going from the elevator, basically up past Sixth Street this fall yet. So, there'll be a lot of work in that alley, or if they're between Maine and Monterey, so. So, that should be pretty much the, we'll have just a little bit of overhead left in tow as they're really moving there, so. So, that project will be coming up.
Did they notify people then?
They will, yeah, they went around and actually got all the, if they need to have permission to put the pad on backyard, in the backyard, they've been, Trevor was Sioux Valley's, putting that together, and been working with everybody, homeowners, stuff like that, so.
Okay, to that point, I took a call from Golden Glass about three, four weeks ago, or it was from Trevor, actually, about Golden Glass, because we did some work for them years ago, there was a meter bed, and there was this, and there was that, and why, why do we do it that way? So, they, they reached out to all those homeowners, not ours.
Alright, anything else for Craig? If not, we'll move on to the finance officer reports. Karen?
My report's in the package, I don't have anything additional to add, so. Do you have questions?
Anyone have any questions for Karen?
I saw that our sales tax numbers from last year were up by point two percent compared to last year. It's not going backwards.
That's right. Yes, alright, let's move on to Teresa's report.
Don't have much to add, like a kind of update on the projects, I mentioned a couple things as well. Like Michael said, the TAP grant, we did submit that on Friday, and it's, I believe, November thirteenth is when that grant review committee will look at it, so we should know by the end of November if we received it or not, so probably this year, yeah. As far as company that's doing the AV upgrades, we, their proposal had sixty-five inch, we can go up to seventy-five inches, they believe they can even measure the wall, so, and still stay right under budget, so that's good, so we will go with the biggest screens we can, and it sounds like they will have an opening to do the work maybe in two or three weeks, so we should get it, and open with them next month, whatnot, as a grade, so. Working on that as moving forward. Pickleball ribbon cutting went well. And then I just did put a little note just to remind you guys, we had a meeting today, Amy Nguyen, Arden, myself, and Dr. Knight, about the legislative form we're trying to help put together on the different measures that are coming up and the issues. That is planned for Friday, October twenty-fifth at seven o'clock, and it'll be at the auditorium at the high school. We're going to get pros and cons from each side, so basically, just try to inform the public, information on most sides, so that when they go to the polls on these different measures or amendments, they, they can hopefully, you know, make an informed decision.
Should send your report on the water, wastewater information, whatever it is.
Whatever, I don't think so.
Whatever acronym you wanna give it. Site Works is back and starting to replace the remaining force main. In my mind, is that truly the force main there, or is that still gravity?
That's gravity, that is.
Oh, it's gravity, okay.
Force main starts further east, right?
Are you waiting, this?
For the lift station.
Lift station, yeah.
Everything's grabbed with the two thousand...
Sorry.
Yeah.
From that point.
She's not a wastewater person.
I say, I've heard a lot about wastewater, this whole process, I'm not... I don't weigh more than I want and know about wastewater, but, yeah, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
Things are still falling downhill.
Be out of the lift station to pump it, then it's forced main.
Okay, just, just in my mind, I wanted to make sure I understood that system.
Could you know when it rolls uphill instead?
Yeah, then we have a problem.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, anything else, Teresa?
No.
Alright, no old business, let's move to the new business. We have review approved pay application for Alliance Construction, two hundred seventy-two thousand four forty-one eighty-nine. And this is on the Twelfth and Oaks project.
Most approved pay request number four to Alliance Construction for two hundred seventy-two thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Any discussion? Are we on target to make it by October eighteen?
I think it's gonna be very, very close.
It'll be within probably three or four days.
Over.
What we're estimating.
That's what I'm kind of...
Okay.
Ring the lights?
Ring gear.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowlen?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Barron? Jazz?
Yes.
Alright, next up...
Along with that, Arden, they did have some days that they were rained out, so if it's, I'm not sure all that contract's rolling, it's by per day, or is that, it's actually a day for deadline?
I believe it's day for deadline, so.
Because sometimes they have like forty-five working days, and they would've got extra days for that.
They'll be false.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be pretty false.
Liquidated damages?
I, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, I don't know.
They're on the contract, though.
It'll be there.
Not that we, not that we wanna enforce them, but...
We've never, never won one. We would have to before, never won.
I'm not saying we shouldn't, just that.
I think one of the biggest things, though, is, you know, based on the weather now, hopefully, I mean, our ten-day forecast looks pretty good, we'll have it maybe done before the weather starts to turn, so that's generally making strides, it's time of year, so. And that's something we'll keep an eye on, too, if the temperature starts getting bad, we don't want them, just go ahead and get it done, get it done, right?
Right. Alright, anything else on that? Alright, next up on your new business, review approved, part-time snow removal job description and allow advertisement.
Approve the job description as presented.
Second.
And allow...
Sorry, sorry. Second finish, refund. Alright, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Jazz?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Bowlen?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Alright, last up, we have a couple mayoral appointments. Sorry, I missed the last month and wasn't able to make these. We usually do these the first of September, but I was gone. So, for city ordinance, we appoint our city attorney and city engineer. I would like to first make the appointment for city engineer for Freeburg Nelson and Ask for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five year. City attorney, what did I say? You want to vote? We'll say, we'll say attorney then.
Alright.
Sorry, hey, I'm a little rusty, give me a break. Do I need a motion on these individually?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll take it, Arden, make a motion to appoint Freeburg Nelson and Ask as city attorney.
Not engineer. Okay, second, okay. Any discussion? Not, we'll vote. Mattson?
Yes.
Bowlen?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
Secondly, I would like to appoint a city engineer, because I know I wouldn't trust them guys to be our attorney, but city engineer, I would appoint ISG for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five year.
No stipulation, like they have to show up once a year?
Oh.
Must do that, yeah.
Is he still working?
I think he does. I think his name's still on the signs, okay.
Still in some media, I'm just...
Make a motion to approve the mayoral appointment of ISG as city engineer.
Second. Any discussion? Oh, that's two seconds. If not, we'll vote. Jazz?
Yes.
Barron? Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Bowlen?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Alright, anything for executive session?
Can we go a quick personnel?
Okay, executive session for personnel, somebody wanna make that motion?
Make a motion to go to executive session.
All in favor? Alright, alright.
Meetings, but we're later, this is great.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Alright, alright.